Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Burke?
Present.
Commissioner Crutcher?
Present.
Commissioner Lucas?
Present.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Present.
Mayor Blake?
Present.
Chief of the Coram, Mayor.
Good evening, I call the Fairview Board of Commissioners meeting to order February the 7th, 2019 at 7:03 PM. First item on the agenda is the prayer and the pledge. Would you please stand? Our most kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this day and for all the many blessings that you've given us. We gather to make decisions for our community. May we only use our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral, as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community, our fellow citizens, and each other. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four on the agenda is approval of agenda and executive session announcements.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Commissioner Crutcher, second by Vice Mayor Rainey. Any further discussion?
Mayor, members of the commission, two items for you. In reverse order, we have an executive session scheduled at the end of the agenda for tonight. That executive session will take approximately 20 minutes. There will be no action by the BLC to be taken at the end of the executive session, so once the board votes to go into executive session, we'll move from this room into the administrative office, we'll return in approximately 20 minutes to adjourn the regular meeting. So we will come back to adjourn, but there will be no action taken by the board once we move into executive session. Lastly, we would like to amend the agenda for item number four to include a consideration of vacancy of the position of city judge. There's some action that may or may not need to be taken. Mr. Potter will be able to explain that process and procedure, but we would request that item three include consideration of that vacancy.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Johnson would go to roll call vote.
Commissioner Crutcher?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Burke?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on agenda is item five, public hearings.
Mayor, actually, it would be item 4A, it would be the judge vacancy, I apologize.
I had that under seven, I apologize. We'll say item 4A. Mr. Crutcher.
Mayor, thank you. Before this item is taken up, I'd ask to be excused. I'm an attorney that practices in this court, and I'm also asking to be considered for that position, so as such, I'd ask to be excused.
Ms. Johnson, let the record reflect.
And Mr. Mayor, I would ask to be excused myself, I too am an attorney who practices in this court, and I would like to be kept in consideration also.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Johnson, let the record reflect.
Mayor.
Mr. Potter.
Your permission, I'll explain the process here just a bit. First, I want to just publicly offer condolences, I'm sure everybody does, to the family of Judge Lee Dreyer. I went to law school with him, and known him for many years, and know he was a person of integrity, very smart man, and a friend of mine, so I'd like to publicly state my condolences to his family. It is the obligation of the Board of Commissioners to fill this position. That is pursuant to charter, and you will fill the position that would serve, that person would serve as city judge until the next general election. So here's the way this process should work tonight. With Commissioner Crutcher and Commissioner Burke abstaining from this process, we are governed by the Roberts Rules of Order. Some governmental entities have statutorily rules that a certain amount of persons need to vote in order for any action to take place. That's not true with this body. This body would be a majority, and in this, given the two abstentions, according to Attorney General's opinions and research that we have reviewed, their votes come out of the mix. So it's going to be a majority of three is going to make the decision tonight about who will fill this position for city judge. So the first thing we're going to need to do, it's a bit perfunctory, is to have a motion and a second and a declaration that the position is vacant. So I think I'm asking for that at this time, if someone can make a motion to declare the position of Fairview Municipal Court Judge vacant.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll need a vote, please, for that, Mayor.
Ms. Johnson, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next step in the process is nomination, if any, for the position of Fairview Municipal Court Judge. There need not be a second to a nomination. What we're going to do is open the floor for nominations, and any of the three, two commissioners and Mayor Blake can nominate someone, and we're going to do that until there are no further nominations. Then I'm going to ask that somebody make a motion, please, to cease nominations, and we'll have to second that and take a vote to cease nominations, and that will be your pool of nominees for this position. Nomination? Do you just ask for any nominations?
Are there any nominations for the position of municipal court judge?
I would nominate Shannon Crutcher.
I would nominate Derek Burke.
I move that nomination cease.
Second.
All right, we have a motion for nominations to cease and a second, so.
Mayor Blake?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
As city attorney, I can attest that the two persons nominated are qualified to serve in this position. In order to serve in this position, one must be an attorney licensed to practice law in the state of Tennessee, over the age of 30, and a resident of Williamson County, Tennessee. I think both of these men qualify for that, would qualify for the position. So the next step in this process would be that we are going to, the city recorder would take a roll call vote, and your options are to vote for any of the nominees, or abstain from voting for any of the nominees, and you certainly have that right, but obviously, I want to remind you that your obligation under the charter is to fill this position, so.
Commissioner Lucas?
Vote for Shannon Crutcher.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Vote for Derek Burke.
Vice Mayor Blake?
Vote for Shannon Crutcher.
Shannon Crutcher has been voted.
All right, that means that Mr. Shannon Crutcher is duly appointed by the Board of Commissioners as judge-elect for the city of Fairview. I previously made arrangements with Judge Mike Binkley of this district to swear in anyone who is selected, and the swearing-in will take place tomorrow morning at 8:30 AM in his chamber in Franklin. So I'll talk more to Mr. Crutcher about that following the meeting. What we will need at this point in time is, it is illegal in Tennessee for a judge to hold both the position of municipal court judge and a member of the legislative body for the city. So Mr. Crutcher, if he accepts this appointment, would need to respectfully tender his resignation immediately from the city of Fairview. So I would, I guess, ask both Mr. Crutcher and Mr. Burke to come back up. Mr. Crutcher, do you accept this appointment?
I do.
Okay. Congratulations, and pursuant to my advice, you would need to tender your resignation immediately from the city of Fairview, and after you do that, the Board of Commissioners would need to vote to accept this resignation, and then we're going to go into another process about what we do to fill this position.
Yeah, at this point, I would tender my resignation as a member of the Board of Commissioners. I will say this, one, this is a process that none of us wanted to have to go through. We lost a city judge who worked really hard to get elected to that position, and did a good job for the four years he was here. I had the privilege of practicing in front of him. He was compassionate to the defendants that came before him, and represented the city of Fairview well, and I hope that I can continue that and continue public service in my role as city judge. With that said, it's very difficult to leave this spot. I've worked really hard with the other members of this board and past members of this board for the past four years to try to make this city a better place, and I feel like tonight, as I step aside, that I've left it in a better place than it was than when I got here four years ago. I appreciate the citizens' support and trust in me, electing me four years ago, and electing me this past November, and again, I look forward to continuing my public service as the city judge. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I move to accept the resignation of Commissioner Crutcher.
Second.
First by myself, and second by Vice Mayor Rainey. Roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Burke?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I would point out, Mayor, for the public's knowledge, some of you already know this, but the appointment is good through the next general election, which will take place in Williamson County in November of 2020, and then it will be an election for a full term. Okay? We will We will now, Mayor, I want to explain the process, it's very similar. The Board of Commissioners, according to the charter, shall fill the role of any vacancy on the Board of Commissioners. And if the vacancy will be more than 90 days, then until the next general election, it will be filled. And then that person will stand, that, that position will be filled at the next general election. It's similar, very similar to the appointment of municipal court judge. So what I'd like to do at this point in time is ask the city recorder to ask for any nominations for the vacancy on the Board of Commissioners.
Are there any nominations for the vacancy on the Board of Commissioners?
I would like to nominate Rod Dawson.
I second that nomination.
Is that Rod or Ron?
Rod.
Ron Dawson?
Rod.
R O D.
R O D.
R O D, okay.
I would think you could speak to Sutherby, Niall.
Mr. Potter?
Yes, yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Our next election cycle, we had changed such that there would be a two-year and two-four-year terms. Because this person will be running in that same election, will that make a difference on how that term will go?
Should not.
This vote would be for the unexpired term in its entirety.
Okay.
So this would, this, the seat filled tonight would be up for reelection again in 2022.
Oh, okay.
It's the, it's the unexpired term of the person whose seat is being filled.
Okay.
I'm sorry I wasn't clear on that, but that's a good question.
I apologize. I would just make sense of two.
It's a great question.
Are there any further nominations?
I would like to make a motion that rather than appointing to fill this seat, that this board vote to hold a special election to let the citizens decide who to fill this seat.
Parliament, procedurally, the motion would be to amend the flow, the motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is to nominate Mr. Dawson. So you would need, your motion properly would be to amend the motion on the floor, not fill the seat and to hold a special election.
Then I vote to amend the motion that's on the floor, not filling the seat and instead holding a special election to allow the citizens to vote for this seat.
That's, that's a proper motion. I guess the mayor would ask for a second.
Is there a second? Hearing now, I'll declare the motion dead.
Okay. Continue your nomination.
Are there any further nominations?
Commissioner?
I would like to then make an amendment to that motion then, that if we're not willing to allow the citizens to vote, that we defer this item until the next meeting so that we can at least have a public hearing to hear citizens' comments before we vote to fill this role.
I'll second that.
Have a first and a second. Any further discussion?
Does our charter require us to, what does our charter require?
The charter states that the Board of Commissioners shall fill, shall fill vacancies on the BOC. If the, if the Board of Commissioners fails to fill vacancies on the, on the board within 90 calendar days, then there's a procedure after that to request a special election.
So we are required, that's our job, elected to do the job of filling this position, unless we just defer it for 90 days?
The language in the charter, Commissioner, states that it is incumbent upon the, on the planning commission, I mean, I'm sorry, the Board of Commissioners.
I'll, I'll read the language specifically. It's section six dash 20 dash 110 of your charter that says, "Any vacancy on the board occurring prior to a regular city election shall be, shall be filled by the remaining members of the board until that election. At the, at the election, the remaining unexpired term shall be filled. No member shall be appointed under this section at any time when the board already has one member so appointed." In other words, can't do it more than once, so.
But there's nothing in there that says that we can't choose as a board how we want to fill that role, whether we choose to vote that person in or we choose to give that to the citizens.
It says it shall be filled. Yeah. And I, I think, I'm going to correct something, I think it was in answer to Commissioner Burks. According to the way I'm reading this, vacancies shall be filled, and at the, at the next general election, the remaining unexpired term shall be filled.
Okay, so he would have to run again in the next major election, which would be in 2020 then?
For the remainder of the unexpired term.
Correct. Okay, so then we would have four seats running in 2020.
And one would only be for a shorter term until 2022.
If I may, real quick, I've actually had to research that last month, that is correct, so.
Mayor, I apologize.
If you're appointing someone now, they will run in 2020, but it will be for what was left of now formerly Commissioner Crutcher's term. So it's, you'll, you'll run again two years later in 2022.
Which, which means because of the, the way we restructure our voting, whoever fills that seat would be through 2022. But then we would also have whoever gets the least amount of votes of the three other seats would only also serve a two-year term. Basically, we'd have two commissioners serving a two-year term.
Now, here's what happens if you don't fill the seat. I mean, I'm going to continue on reading with the charter. In section B of that section, it says, "If, within 90 days of the occurrence of a vacancy, the vacancy has not been filled by the remaining members of the commission." So the charter is anticipating that the remaining members of the commission are going to fill this vacancy. But if you don't do that within 90 days, so three months, the vacancy has not been filled by the remaining members of the commission in accordance with subsection A, then the mayor, or if a vacancy exists in the position of the mayor, then the city manager, or if a vacancy exists in the positions of mayor and city manager, then the city recorder shall notify the county election commission within five business days following the passage of the 90-day period. So in this case, it would be the mayor. So if mayor, if we don't fill this vacancy within 90 days, Mayor Blake will notify the election commissioner of Williamson County. Election, the county election commission shall call a special election for the purpose of filling the vacancy, provided, however, that such special election shall be held in conjunction with the next general election or city election if such election is scheduled to occur more than 75 days but less than 120 days from the date the county election commission is notified of the unfilled vacancy. That clear as mud?
What does that mean in English?
That means that, that means that you shall, you have an obligation to fill it as the board. You fill, you, you yourself fill the position. But if you don't do it, and there's a lot of different reasons why you might not be able to do it. Maybe you can't agree on a consensus candidate. I don't know. But if you, if you don't do it, then after 90 days, the mayor has an obligation by charter to contact the election commissioner of Williamson County and say, hey, we have this vacancy and we need a special called election. And so a special called, called election will occur, but it'll be held in conjunction with the next general election, which would be November of 2020, if that election is scheduled to occur more than 75 days but less than 120 days. So it's, actually, it's going to be closer than that, right? So there's going to, there would have to be a special election just for this seat. It wouldn't be at the next general election if you don't get it filled within the next 90 days. That's the way I'm reading that. So. Where are we at? The city recorder on the process, was there a motion on the floor?
There are motions.
Okay, that's right. Commissioner Lucas made a motion, and Commissioner Burks made a motion. So Mayor, you would have to take action on the motion on the floor.
So when there are also a motion on the floor to nominate Rod? In a second?
Nominate Dawson and then a motion to amend that motion.
The superseding motion you have before you is a motion to defer.
Yeah, you got to take care of that first to go back to your nominations.
Offered by Commissioner Lucas, seconded by Commissioner Burks.
Okay.
Move to roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas? Commissioner Burks?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Nay.
Nay.
And so the nomination process will resume. We have one nomination that I heard earlier. Mr. Dawson?
Yes. Are there any further nominations of Mr. Dawson?
I move that nomination cease.
Motion that this is. For a second.
Second, sorry.
First and second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Mayor Blake?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Nay.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
nominations have ceased, so now there's only one nominee, but that nominee must receive a majority of the votes. So. It'd be, the only way to vote is yea or nay or abstain. So those are your options.
We're voting on appointing Mr. Rod Dawson to the open vacancy BOC. Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Yea.
Commissioner Burks?
Yea.
Mr. Lucas?
Nay.
And Mayor Blake?
Yea.
All right, congratulations. Mr. Dawson, is he here? So.
Mr. Dawson, would you come forward, please, sir?
I can swear in now. Will Dawson come up as city attorney? I can swear in tonight. solemnly swear that I will to which I am elected, to which I am, to which I'm about to assume. I do solemnly swear to support and solemnly support the Constitution of Tennessee, the Constitution of Tennessee, the United States of America, the United States of America, and the Charter of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, the Charter of the City of Fairview, Tennessee. And you faithfully perform, faithfully perform, the duties of the office, the duties of the office, of city commissioner, of city commissioner, representing all the citizens, representing all the citizens of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, and the City of Fairview, Tennessee. And as a we decide two copies. Signature of the commissioner taking oath. I'll give you one of these on the second. Congratulations, Mr. Dawson. As city attorney, again, I want to make sure that the public is aware, as I'm reading this, the charter, the language in the charter, that any vacancy on the board occurring prior to a regular city election shall be filled by the remaining members of the board until that election. The board has fulfilled that responsibility. And at the election, the remaining unexpired term shall be filled. So if you choose to, to seek reelection to this seat, election, seek election to this seat, election will be held at the next general election, which would be November of 2020. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Potter. Welcome, welcome, Mr. Dawson, and congratulations.
That concludes the process, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Move us to item five, public hearings, subsection A. Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir, Mayor, we have three public hearings tonight for you. They're related to items 10A, 10B, and 10C on the agenda. We would encourage you to open those individually. We also have a sign-up sheet at the podium for anyone who signed up or likes to speak.
At this time, we open public hearing on item 10A. Is there anyone present to speak? Seeing no one, we will now close the public hearing on item 10A. Open the public hearing on item 10B. Is there anyone present to speak on item 10B? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on item 10B and open the public hearing on 10C. Please step to the podium, sir. State your name and address for us, please.
Travis Bennett. I live at 7316 Lake Road.
Welcome, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you. Got several issues. Number one is the traffic, which we all know traffic is going to be majorly increased by the subdivision on Lake Road as well as Cox Pike. As somebody that has to pull it on Lake Road every time I go somewhere, it is so narrow now that it's hard to even stay in your lane as you pull out of your drive. School buses cannot even meet each other on our road. One school bus has to pull over almost in the ditch and stop for the other school bus to pass it and then go on their way. The volume of houses that you are adding is going to astronomically increase the volume of traffic on both roads. There is some discussion of putting the second entrance onto Lake Road, and that majorly concerns me because that is on my property line in between me and my neighbors. I'm not sure how the subdivision is legally going to access Lake Road. I don't think they own that property. I'm not aware of it if they do. If there is an easement or anything else, I don't think that that would have been given in the reason to put in a public street. Because this will not just be used by the subdivision. This will be used by the general public, the visitors, anybody else coming in. This road will be within about 45 feet of my garage door. And the road is also not going to meet city ordinances either. And if you plan to meet city ordinances in the future, you're going to have to encroach 10 feet on my side. So then my sidewalk will be 35 feet from my garage door. And it will be in the middle of my driveway at present time. My driveway and where this proposed road is coming out onto Lake Road is 10 to 12 feet apart. By the time you put in a radius to access this by any city standards on the right-of-way out by the road, you are going to be having those same people driving in my driveway. So I will be sitting beside these people trying to get out and go either direction while these people are coming out of the subdivision. This is in a hollow. It's not a huge line of sight in either direction to access Lake Road, period, no matter where you're at. I don't know if any of you have drove down there and see where it's at. It's never been used for an easement. It does not look like to me, from talking to neighbors, it doesn't. It's grown up with trees that are at least 12 inches in diameter, some of it even bigger. There's not a culvert next to my culvert where it's ever been accessed by anybody that's owned the property that the subdivision is being put on. I understand progress, but at the safety of the community as well as just, it is, it's going to be greatly diminished by the increase of this traffic. Because you have 141 units, you've got at least two cars per unit. And if I lived in that subdivision, in the middle of it, I would come out that entrance if there was an entrance. So we're talking probably at least 50% or greater of those people are going to be So we're talking probably at least 50% or greater of those people are going to be using that to get out of town. So, it's just not safe, in my opinion. And with them not owning it, or, it really raises a lot of questions for me on how they are going to gain access to that. Haven't seen that brought up in any of the past meetings, because I have listened to them on YouTube. And granting a variance to narrow this down even to an emergency entrance is going to... It's not easy. I had to have the ambulance and fire department come to my house last December, or last November, and the fire truck did not hardly get pulled in my drive. The ambulance could, but the fire truck, it was not easy for them to get pulled in. My neighbors across the road have had the ambulance and fire truck to theirs, and the fire truck has to park in the road whenever they call the ambulance. The ambulance can come into their drive, but it's not even accessible by the emergency equipment that you're wanting to take down this possible entrance, if it is legally possible to do. So, I mean, these are concerns of mine, and I would, I think, most of my neighbors, because it's not a safe road to drive or pull out on, and it's already used by a lot of people to bypass and get to Cox Pike and get to the light on 100 faster than going up to 100 already. I think that's about all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Is there anyone else to speak? Yes, sir, step to the podium, please. State your name and your address.
Ian Kelly, I'm at 7202 Cutters Crossing Court.
Welcome, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, thanks for having me. Really, I'd just like to say, you know, I'm all for, excuse me, the sale of the property. I mean, I think we'd all much more enjoy looking out at rolling hills than houses, but obviously, that's not going to happen. And, you know, it's somebody's land to sell, and I'm all for that. The thing I'm really having an issue with is, the property was sold for the minimum, the low usage of the houses that they're wanting to put on it, and the amendment, to my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is to basically put more houses in that space that they've already, you know, purchased the land. So, you know, the fact that it was bought with the understanding that it's zoned for this many houses, you know, to come back in and want to put more houses in there, that's where I'm having the issue. The gentleman that was just up here, you know, Lake Road is real tight driving down, Cox Pike is tight too, you know. I tell my kids not even to walk on the road, just afraid, you know, people just fly through there and there's nowhere for them to go. But, I'm all for growth, I'm all for seeing Fairview grow, and, you know, we're the last little bastion of Williamson County, and, you know, it's going to happen, but I just want to see it done the right way, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Is there anyone else to speak? You may.
Lot size as well. Going from R-20 to, or going to R-20 PUD, do understand, it's a great, more greater density. I do understand that they are offering green space, which is a plus to the city, but from looking at topographical maps, and water drainage, and everything else, the green space that they're offering, I don't think houses could be put on it anyway. So, they are getting an improvement to put more houses on their property, and they're considering the entire acreage against how many houses they are putting. So, on Lake Road, in my subdivision, our houses were subdivided as an acre. Me and the majority of my neighbors have at least an acre. So, I know that some of these houses, especially on the, more so on the end of my piece of the property, that it's adjoining, they're going to be 15,000 square feet instead of 20,000 square feet. So we're way less than even a half an acre. Unless I am reading something wrong. So, we are approving and giving them a variance for something that could not be developed anyway, is my opinion. The green space is great, but you couldn't build on that if you, I don't, I don't think, and I'm definitely not a lawyer or a huge contractor, but I can read a topographical map, because I am a farmer, and have a history of that, so... Plus, we have concerns over the sewer and all of that, and we realize that they have their own treatment plant, but that leach field still leaches out into that property and still goes downstream somewhere. It doesn't come downstream on my property, but you have a lot of sewage being treated there as well. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on item 10C, and move to item six on the agenda, Citizens Comments.
Mr. Bennett was listed under Citizens Comments.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Susan Sheffield?
Ms. Sheffield, if you'd step to the podium, please. State your name and address.
Susan Sheffield, 7580 Cherokee Hills Road.
Welcome.
Okay, thank you. I've lived here since 2003, and I'm amazed at how much the city has grown and expanded. But with that growth and expansion and increase in population, we also have a lot more noise than we used to. I'm proposing that the Board adopt a noise ordinance that would be similar to the City of Franklin. Their ordinance is very comprehensive and describes not only violations of the noise ordinance, but exemptions like construction equipment, lawn maintenance equipment, or even football games. So I'm asking the Board to review what I've printed, and I'll present this to y'all. I think someone with the City of Franklin put a lot of effort into developing this, so most of the hard work's already been done. I think all the Board would have to do is just review this and make any changes that you feel would be more specific to our community, so, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Sheffield. If you'd give it to the City Recorder, please, ma'am, thank you. Anyone else, Ms. Johnson? Okay. Move to item seven, Public Announcements, Awards and Recognitions.
There are none tonight, Mayor.
None tonight. Move to item eight, Staff Comments and Monthly Reports, subsection A, Police Department, Chief Humphries. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. You've done a lot of work tonight, so I will speed through mine and not bore you with it. But we'll start off with just our personnel report, in a monthly comparison based on last month, staffing is at 21, full staff, just like last month. Over time, hours increased just a little bit to 279.5, and then, training hours also, that's man-hours training, did increase also to 102 for the month. Operational report, it's just a monthly comparison, last month, the calls that were either a calls of service or self-initiated was 1,036, that did up just a little bit to 943 for the month, still a very active and busy month. Activity for the month in a monthly comparison, arrests went from 92 to 124, increase in that. Some of the, again, I put some of the, there's so many categories, but these are kind of the, a lot of the important topics people want to know. Domestics went up by one, DUIs were the same, drug charges dipped just a little bit, and our theft responses were the same. Citations did go up from 23 to 100, and let me be clear on that, those are not just speeding tickets. A citation can be for an offense that you're citing in lieu of arrest, so that doesn't always equate to just speeding tickets, is what a lot of people in the community fear that we're writing much of those, but that is a lot of just citation for criminal offense. Traffic accidents did increase from 10 to 17, and we had one that involved a personal injury, and no fatalities, we're glad to say. No significant public relations events that we were able to attend in January of 2019. And then additional, we have moved to revitalize the auxiliary program. We currently only have one auxiliary officer. The program, from what I understand, before my time here, was a successful program. When I, we got here and kind of restructured the department, we had every intention of moving back to that, revitalizing that. We were wanting to put on three more this year and make that four personnel. The staff did that process, the interview board, background check, and we selected Scott Miller, Steve Richards, and Roy Stinson. They will be starting their training next month, and we'll get them trained up, and you should see them out assisting and helping with our normal patrol units. So, if you do see them, welcome to Fairview. And that's all I have, unless you have anything.
No, thank you, sir. Item 8B, Fire Department, Chief Hughes. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Call volume for January 2019, we're up a little over 10% from last year, ran 102 calls. Significant events for January, we did have a structure fire inside the city limits, and we were called out for a mutual aid call to remove a patient for the county that was off the road. They used our UTV to get back to the patient and bring him out to the ambulance. Next slide, the breakdown of the calls, again, medical leads, usually most of our calls, they're usually medical-based, the majority of them. This is up from our total call percentage last year was 64%. In January, 71% of those calls were medical. The structure fires listed on there, and other is going to include alarms, canceled calls, calls for service from the public, and then we had nine motor vehicle accidents. Training hours for the month of January, the Fire Department, we had 601 total training hours, those are man-hours. That's the breakdown, a big portion of those are medical training hours and facility training. Some of the other things are driver training and officer training. Right now, Fire Department is fully staffed, per our budget, with 18 full-time employees and nine volunteers. That kind of ends the report. I want to bring up something, just to remind people, if there's anyone in the city that is living in a home that does not have working smoke detectors, please contact the Fire Department. We have a grant through the state, and we have smoke detectors that we can bring out and install for those citizens. So if they can just contact the Fire Department, we'll set up a time to come out when it's convenient for them and install those in areas they need to be installed in.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
If you will contact the Mills on Will's office, they usually have elderly that they can put you in touch with that need those especially.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Hughes. Item 8C, Public Works, Mr. Collins?
Yes, Mayor, lastly, I have Public Works. As you know, we've been working through some transitions, so for the next couple of months, I'll be doing your Public Works report, your Planning Department report, and Administrative report, so it's just going to be busy for a little bit, and that's okay. Some things we're working on, we are continuing with the leaf pickup service, as you're aware. A couple of months back, we purchased the biodegradable bags that we could put out, they'd be free to the citizens, so they could come use that service in a better manner than we had done in the past. This month so far, we've retrieved 125 of those bags, those are 30-gallon bags, that's a significant amount of leaves that we've been able to pick up, in a safer manner than we have been doing in the past. So we know that's working, it's working well, and we hope to expand on that. Also, as a part of some discussions ongoing about leaves, limb, debris pickup, there will be a community involvement meeting two weeks from tonight, at the Board of Commissioners meeting regarding the future operations of the leaf pickup, the debris pickup, and how that will work as we go into the summer and into the fall of this year. So we encourage our residents to participate in that and attend that meeting, so we can at least be heard and understand the purposes for why we're doing what we're doing and the plan to go forward. Lastly, or not lastly, but next on the list, as you're aware, we have done a total restructure of the Public Works Department and the Planning Department. The restructure is complete, we have all those personnel in place where they need to be, and we are working to follow up with the job descriptions for those new positions. We expect that those will be completed by the end of this month, so every employee will know the clearly identified rules and regulations for their current new roles, how they have expanded, or been brought in to combine roles for some of our staff. As a part of that, we're processing our capital needs. As we go forward, the big thing we have are equipment needs, primarily with heavy equipment. You may recall that we talked about going away from the chipper service and going away from the vacuum service for the leaves, to a knuckle boom or grapple truck, a piece of equipment that we could use to perform those duties not only better, but safer for our employees. We talked about leasing or renting a truck that we could bring in to do some of that work and see how that process would work. Luckily enough, there is a vendor nearby that's going to bring us a demonstrator truck that we're going to get to use for a week, they're going to provide us the truck, the driver, and all the equipment we need to use that. So as you see us move forward in the next couple of weeks, if you see some activity with a truck or new piece of equipment, we've not purchased that, we're not proposing that at this time, but we do want to keep our options open for what we can do to make our workplace safer and to improve the services that we have now. So, once we get that out, we may invite you to come out, take a look, see what that is, how it functions. That equipment's not inexpensive, but if we compare the cost of the equipment to the cost of staff, personnel, injuries, and other things, we believe that's going to assist us in improving those services. And lastly, as a part of that service, you may recall that in the fall, we adopted some ordinances that specified how the chipper routes and the leaf pickup routes would work, as well as when debris could be left on the road, the size of those piles, and things of that nature. And what we did not have in the past was the ability to enforce those rules and regulations. You have an item on your agenda tonight, item 11C. It identifies the ability for the city to have its codes enforcement officer or codes official have summons authority. What we want to do as a part of the Public Works, as we move forward, to make sure we're keeping the rights of way clean, are, is when we have violations of those new ordinances, we have the ability to enforce the code. We want to do that first through letter, remind the resident that they're in violation of this code, give them some time to clean that up, follow up with a second letter to make sure we've done our due diligence to help assist them through the process. And lastly, if that doesn't work, we want our codes official to be able to issue a summons to have that person or the violator come to court to answer to that summons. It's not an arrest authority, we're not approving a police officer, it's just approving the ability and improving our service, so that we can move through those processes in a more efficient manner. That's most of what we have going on at Public Works, it's been a busy month, the staff has done an exceptional job with the changes. As you know, we're trying to improve those services while not increasing staff, that is not an easy task, however, we believe we have the structure in place to do that. We appreciate your patience, not only listening to that, but give us the opportunity to work through that and make sure that it functions the way we think that it will. And that's our Public Works report for tonight.
Item nine, Consent Agenda, minutes from the January 3rd BOC meeting and the January 17th Board of Commissioners workshop.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lucas, second by Vice Mayor Rainey. We'll go to a roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Burks?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Blay?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 10, subsection A, Ordinance 2018-24, Vice Mayor Rainey.
Ordinance 2018-24, an ordinance to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 22, parcel 130.02, consisting of two acres, located on Sweetbrier Road, from an RS40 low-density residential zoning district to an R-20 medium-density residential zoning district. Owner, James P. Caldwell, Jr.
Move to approve.
Second. Have a first by Commissioner Lucas, a second by Commissioner Burks, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Burks?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Have a question, am I allowed to abstain since I've not read in on this information? Abstain.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Mayor Blay?
Aye. Item 10B, Ordinance... Item 10B, Ordinance 2018-25, Vice Mayor Rainey.
Ordinance 2018-25, an ordinance to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 22, parcel 145.01, consisting of one acre, located at 7605 Hurley Lane, from an RS40 low-density residential zoning district to an R20 medium-density residential zoning district. Owners: Mark and Linda Williams. I have a question about, can I ask a question about these?
Yes, ma'am.
And I know that City Recorder and I have discussed this, but both of these came forward again in 2019. So do we need to change that year date, or does that matter in the great scheme of the world?
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Vice Mayor, excuse me, Commissioner Lucas, seconded by Commissioner Burks. Any further discussion?
Yes. Are we positive that this will meet the setbacks to put what he's wanting to do on it?
Yes, sir, I'm positive that that does meet the code.
Okay, it's going to be close.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Burks.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Vane.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Mayor Blade.
Aye.
Item 10C, Ordinance 2018-26, Vice Mayor Rainey.
An ordinance to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 043, parcel 23, consisting of 111 acres, located on Cox Pike, from an RS40 low-density residential zoning district to an R20 PUD, medium-density residential planned unit development, zoning district with 141 proposed lots, applicant Tony Cavender.
I'm going to ask to recuse myself for this matter. Thank you.
Let the record reflect. Ms. Johnson. Is there a motion? Hearing none, we will move to item 11A, New Business, Ordinance 2019-02, Vice Mayor Rainey.
An ordinance to revise the fund balance policy of the City of Fairview, repeal Ordinance 852 and Resolutions 17-14.
Collins.
Yes, Mayor Blade, members of the commission. You may recall that in a recent work session, we discussed increasing the city's reserve amount. There's been some discussion as we move forward with some of the changes we've made personnel recently and some of our operations, that there was some issue financially with the city, and that was the precedent for, or the purpose for doing those things. I'd like to report to you that is in fact not true, as we discussed at the last work session. The purpose of this is to increase the city's reserves, not deplete the city's reserves. The current ordinance that the city has in place is to have a budgeted reserve annually of 5%. We would like to increase that budgeted reserve from 5% to 10%. We like to do that by ordinance to safeguard the city's finances as we move forward. In reverse order, Resolution 17-14 is a resolution that's already expired, but it did identify previously some reserve and some money movements that needed to take place with some restricted-use funds, primarily the state street aid and the school facilities fund. As you're aware, the school facilities fund no longer exists, and any allocations that would have been made to the state street aid fund have since expired. However, since it did reference those, part of what I have before you tonight is to repeal Resolution 1714, even though it's no longer in effect. From a literature standpoint, we need to do that. Secondly, Ordinance 852 is the city's ordinance that identifies its reserve fund currently specified at 5%. What we would like to do is repeal 852, the ordinance, repeal Resolution 1714, and replace them with an ordinance that increases the city's reserve from 5% to 10%. We also want to be careful in how we do that, so the ordinance you have before you to increase the reserves would take place on July 1, 2020, which gives us time to ensure that our financial health allows us to do that during this fiscal year, and we make that effective on July 1, 2020. It would also be effective every day after July 1, 2020. So as we move forward, there would be no change in the reserve fund any day after that. It will be perpetual unless there was a change by this body, and that's the purpose for the repeal of Ordinance 852 and Resolution 17-14.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Rainey, second by Commissioner Burks. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have moved to a roll call vote. Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Burks.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Aye. Item 11B, Ordinance 2019-03, Vice Mayor Rainey.
An ordinance amending the city's reserve fund requirement.
I believe this would be the ordinance that we just talked about that would increase the city's reserve from 5% to 10%.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Rainey, second by Commissioner Lucas. Any further discussion?
Mayor, just as a point of, the reasoning behind this, so you know, as we go forward, two things. We currently have in some funds available, an amount that we could today fund our reserve fund at 10%. We could do that effective July 1 of 2019, and I don't see any issue with that. Again, the date that you have is July 1, 2020, and in just the abundance of caution to make sure we move forward properly in this manner. The second part of this, other than being financially sound, we want to make sure that we've protected the assets of the city. But as we've also discussed, as we move forward, and forever's a long time, when we look at our future needs, capital and other, where we're looking in, one of the things that may need to be considered is the city's bond rating. I can tell you from past experience that the city's bond rating is made up of a number of factors, but roughly 35% of the city's bond rating is derived from its reserve fund. The standard is 10%. Obviously, if you do more, that's great. If you do less, if you care for you can. But we want to maximize the funds that we have available now to save money in the future should we look to finance any item we have before us. So in addition to securing those funds as a budgetary matter, we also want to secure interest savings in the future should we need to do that, and that's the primary purpose for the 10% reserve.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we move to a roll call vote. Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Burks.
Aye.
Mayor Blade.
Aye.
Item 11C, Ordinance 2019-04, Vice Mayor Rainey.
An ordinance amending the City of Fairview Municipal Code and authorizing the City of Fairview's codes official as a special police officer with summons authority. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, Vice Mayor Rainey, second by Commissioner Burks. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Aye.
Item 11D, Ordinance 2019-05, Vice Mayor Rainey.
An ordinance to amend section 14-104.3 of the City of Fairview Zoning Ordinance Board of Zoning Appeals Membership.
Mr. Collins.
Yes, Mayor, members of the board, as you're aware, we've reviewed some policies. We have vacancies on the zoning board of adjustment, and in filling those vacancies, we recognized an item that needed to be addressed that was a part of the city zoning ordinance as it related to this. Basically, for someone to be eligible to serve on the City of Fairview Board of Zoning Appeals, they must have been a city resident for three years prior to their appointment on the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Currently, we require just simple residency for the planning commission and basically, simple residency for our elected officials. And we thought that given you would only need to have basic residency for the planning commission, then it stood to reason that the same would hold true for the Board of Zoning Appeals. So what we have before you is just simply to amend the zoning ordinance. This does require two readings, and I will tell you that typically, the planning commission approves the city's zoning ordinance, and that comes back to the city council or the Board of Commissioners for final approval. This would not require any action by the planning commission, however, just to let them know that there's some activity taking place with the zoning ordinance. I have this under my business at the planning commission Tuesday night to advise them of the change. They will not need to take any action, but they will know that there's a change to the zoning ordinance, and that's what this is.
At this time, I will need to publicly resign from the Board of Zoning Appeals Board, which will also create, I believe, two open positions on that board. So if any citizen is interested in participating on that board, we urge you to complete an application. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Rainey, second by Commissioner Lucas. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Burks.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Aye.
Item 11E, Resolution 03-19, Vice Mayor Rainey.
A resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners authorizing the city manager to execute motor rental lease purchase documents relating to the city's public safety radio system. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Rainey, second by Commissioner Lucas. Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to say that someone sent me today a list of grants that we could have used, should have used, for this radio system, and I've had time to look at three on the list. All three of those did not, we were not qualified to apply for, and I believe that most of them had already expired, those funds were no longer available. So just to let everybody know that we have tried everything we can do to save money.
I also received the email and did review and did not find where it would have been beneficial to us at all. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we go to a roll call vote. Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Burks.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Item 11F, Pyro Shows Contract.
Mayor, I've had an opportunity to review this contract, and I would respectfully ask that this be deferred to a later meeting so that I can, I've got some suggested language I would like to add to the contract.
Motion to defer.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lucas, second Vice Mayor Rainey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we go to a roll call vote. Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Mayor Blade.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Aye.
Item 12, Communications from the Mayors and Commissioner, Commissioner Burks.
I would like to send my condolences to the family of Judge Dryer. I wasn't here when that was being discussed earlier, and I did want to say that. And I'd like to congratulate soon-to-be Judge Crutcher, as soon as he's sworn in. He seems to have disappeared. Mr. Crutcher is a very dear friend of mine, he's a colleague in the legal community as well, is here on the board, so he will do an outstanding job for this city, and we are very lucky, and I'm very proud to have him. That's all.
Commissioner Dawson.
I want to thank the Board of Commissioners, and I also want to thank the residents of the City of Fairview for this huge honor to serve you. This, to me, is a huge milestone in my life. I've been a public servant for over 25 years in the fire service, and it's the way I approach life. So I just want to thank all of you for honoring me with this position.
Commissioner Lucas.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo what Commissioner Burks said to Judge Dryer's family, friends, colleagues. Send my thoughts and prayers, condolences to those. Congratulations to Commissioner Crutcher, Judge Crutcher now, on his position. Congratulations to Commissioner Dawson on his new position, and that's all I've got tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Rainey.
I would also like to congratulate Shannon and thank him for, when we were elected, we were new and knew nothing, and how much he kind of helped us and led us in the right ways to know what we were doing. So thank you and congratulations.
I would also like to extend my condolences to the family of Judge Dryer. He was a personal friend and a very fine gentleman and important in the city's business. Congratulations to Judge Crutcher on his appointment, and we wish him well. I would also like to share with you that my vote tonight for Commissioner Dawson was not one that did not go into a lot of deep thought. Unfortunately, with Judge Dryer's imminent illness, we did expect that eventually this would come, and I have done a great deal of soul-searching and a great deal of praying and pondering, and Mr. Dawson was the logical choice that came to my mind, and that's all I have. At this time, we will adjourn to executive session.
Mayor, may I have one thing?
Yes, sir, Ms. Collins.
I don't want to interrupt, we need to get into that, but I just, I want to bring something to light that I just feel needs to be said. A couple of years ago, when I came here, and then about a year or so ago, we started talking about things we were doing, I made a couple of guarantees. I guarantee, number one, that we're going to work really hard, and I made another guarantee that we're going to make some mistakes from time to time. Not here to confess any mistakes, not known anyway. I can tell you that we work pretty hard. And I also here, as you well know, I don't do Facebook, social media, all those things. Excuse your, excuse your way of thinking sometimes, I try to avoid that. But in looking at the agenda that we have tonight, it's February 7, and we just had first reading on ordinance change number five for the year. Not zonings, annexations, but procedurally, what we do, and we've been to three meetings this year. That's a pretty high pace for what we have going so far. So when we're working hard to make those changes, I want the public to know that that's sincere. There's an effort to get this right, and we're working hard to do that. Again, we're going to make mistakes from time to time, and that's okay. But this board, in this body, has taken off running with this year to do those things. If you look back at the last two and a half years since I've been here, just a quick rundown, we have a new court clerk, we have a new city manager, we have a new city attorney, we have a new police chief, we have a new fire chief, we've restructured the Public Works Department, we've restructured the Planning Department, we have a new building inspector, we've reassigned human resources, we have an all-new Board of Commissioners, and we have eight of nine new planning commissioners since that time. If you consider those positions of leadership, that's 96.3% turnover in two and a half years. So I find it difficult that the perception would still be it's the same old Fairview doing the same old thing, because it isn't the same old Fairview doing the same old thing. There's a lot of work that's gone into what's happened tonight, what's happened last year, what's happened the year before, and what will happen 10 years from now. So on behalf of the staff, I want to thank you for your effort to do this work. On behalf of myself, I want to thank the staff for the hours that they put in to make this thing go, and I want to take the public at large that understands we are trying to better this community. It is not difficult, it is not fast, but it is underway. So thank you for what you do, thank you for what you will do, and thank you for your consideration of things we bring you in the process. And with that, I'll leave that for the adjournment to the executive session.